Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Ron Davis.
Dear Lord, as we gather here today, dear Lord, to take care of business of the city, we ask that you would work within our hearts, our minds, and our souls to be able to operate within our purpose and serve your will. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
Go call.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo.
Here.
Councilmember Brooke Markout.
Here.
Councilmember Warren White.
Here.
Councilmember Troy Como. Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Here.
Item one, public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
Yes.
Seeing none, please put your, silence your phones, and we move to item two A. Madam Clerk.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of March 5th, 2025, which will be published on March 19th, 2025.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo and Councilwoman Brooke Markout, is there any comments on the minutes of March the 5th? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three A.
Ordinance number 2025-05, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a preventative maintenance agreement with Kalkashu Mechanical Contractors Incorporated for the City Hall HVAC system.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill and Councilwoman Brooke Markout got that one. Is there anyone here to publicly comment on this item? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo and Councilman Warren White. Now, I need a main motion.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Dan Dahl, Councilman Ron Davis, is there any discussion on this main motion? Talked about it last meeting, so everybody's good?
Mm-hmm.
Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk. Three B.
Ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a controlled investment service agreement with Kalkashu Mechanical Contractors Incorporated for the City Hall HVAC system.
Motion to open this public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Brooke Markout and Councilman Ron Davis had the second. Is there anyone comment on this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilman Warren White, I need a second.
Second.
Uh, Councilman Ron Davis this time. Thank you. Now I need a main motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo and Councilman Dan Dahl.
Mm.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Right, good. Talked about it last time. Please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Three C.
Special Ordinance number 2024-2025-12, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funding related to additional Tesh Haven subdivision access.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Councilman Dan Dahl.
Second.
And Councilman Troy Como. Anyone from the public to discuss this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo and Councilman Warren White. Now I need a main motion.
So moved.
Councilman Dan Dahl.
Second.
Uh, Councilman Troy Como, is there any discussion on this item? Everybody good with this? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Three D.
Special Ordinance number 2024-2025-13, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funding for the Little Brooklyn Park project, FPNC number 50ML1-2204.
This is Little Brooklyn Park. I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Councilman Dan Dahl.
Second.
Wow. Please, uh, Councilman David Merrill, is there anyone here to discuss this item? Hearing seen no one, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo and Councilwoman Brooke Markout. Now I need a main motion.
Motion.
Councilman Dan Dahl got the main motion and, uh, Councilman Ron Davis had the second. Okay. Y'all kind of speak up because I can't see everywhere. Um, is there any discussion? That closed though. Any discussion, then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Yeah, if you don't mind, I can't look both directions, kind of be verbal besides raising your hand, so everybody knows you made the motion. What's that? Oh, Ron.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Three E.
Special Ordinance number 2024-2025-14, an ordinance amending the budget for Sucre Drive wastewater treatment plant headworks upgrade and rehabilitation project.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
I move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como, Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo, is anyone from the public to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close.
I move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como, Councilman Warren White. Now I need a main motion.
I move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como, Councilwoman Brooke Markout, y'all fast. Uh, is there anyone to discuss anything on this item? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Now we move on to resolutions. Four A.
Resolution number 2529, a resolution declaring certain Sadeev new Iberia vehicles as surplus property and further authorizing the sale of same at a cost not less than a hundred dollars in accordance with state law.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilman Ron Davis, Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo, is there any discussion on this item? Everybody good? Please vote your machines.
Ron, Ron.
Damn, I thought I did that. I'm sorry.
I'll hit you. Thank you. We're moving fast tonight, dude.
Yeah, you're moving fast. You're right. You're right.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a state auction.
Yeah, okay, state auction.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, four B.
Resolution number 2530, a resolution awarding contract to E&amp;L Construction Group LLC for the Little Brooklyn Park project, FPNC number 50ML1-2204, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith, all contingent upon approval from the governor's office of facility planning and control.
So moved.
I need a motion.
Second.
Councilman Dan Dahl and Councilman Warren White, um, this is our new little park. Any discussion? We got pictures? Okay.
Yeah, let me see.
Real quick. And what's not in it is some of the painting on the sidewalks. Just, just to tell you, I mean, it's really nice. It functions as a park. The bids came in and we, we will have to add that. We do not have enough funds. I want to build a park. I want to get it used. It's, it's a great community effort, but some of the painting of the murals on the sidewalk are, are, they were just too expensive.
Can you back it up? Uh, back to the main picture of what the pavilion is?
Right, David?
No, not.
Yep.
Okay.
Want to tell us about it, David?
Yeah, so, uh, on February 19th, we had a bid opening for this project. E&amp;L Construction Group was the second lowest bidder. The lowest bidder was JAI Construction. However, they had to withdraw their bid due to a mathematical error in the project. So that's where we ended up proceeding with E&amp;L Construction Group for the recommendation. With their base bid, we took the deduct alternate number two was removed, the drinking fountain from the park. There's just one drinking fountain. And we had some value engineered items that we wanted to take as well to help bring the cost down. And so that's where we settled on a, uh, four hundred and six thousand nine hundred dollars for the project.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I see y'all did something with some, uh, extra light posts.
Yeah.
So you're not taking away their lighting?
Not all the lighting. We had three light posts and we have lighting under the pavilion. We just reduced the light post count to one light post for the park plus the pavilion lighting.
You think that's?
It'll be adequate, yeah.
Okay.
It's not a very large site. That one light will be enough to provide some.
And that lighting is different than the pavilion. It will be on at night all the time versus pavilion. Not the pavilion light, right?
Right, we had those on like a switching system.
And once it's built, if we have an issue, we can, it would be cheaper for us to just lay at a later point. If we think we have an issue, a safety issue, I'll come back to you and ask to add a light.
Yeah.
If we need another one.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And it's on the corner, so there's actually a lot of street lighting as it is on Henry Street, so it shouldn't be a dark site.
No problem.
Yes, sir. On good chance.
So these deductions that we see is mostly engineering costs.
Well, no, they're more, they're more or less sort of allowances that we put into the project for the value engineering. But the, yeah, the deduction is a, the drinking fountain is an engineering item.
Okay.
We had two lights and then the, the bulk of it, though, is allowances we put aside for mural stuff and things like that. The community organization wanted us to try to help fund. But I'm sure they'll probably be able to find means to do this, those type of items without compromising the, the structural aspects to the park. You know, the main meat of it, so.
Now, in regards to that drinking water fountain, so were there two or is, is just eliminating one?
There was just one for the site.
So we would not have one?
We would not have one of this stuff.
Water on the site.
And it was a pretty hefty cut.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was twenty-three thousand dollars for.
How much?
Really?
That was.
You got to understand, it's not just the drinking fountain. It's also getting the water to it.
It's to get the water to it in the drain line.
As well, making those connections.
At this point, I mean, I, I had to try to get it in the money.
Yeah, it's hard to visualize a park without water. You know, you know, but anyhow, I guess that's something we can add on later on. You have one though, right?
What's that? No, we don't have any drinking fountain. No. Because it was, it was, at this point, we don't. It's a very small park and it's just like a little pocket park. Think of it like church alley. Think of it like, uh, you know, we're going to be doing hopefully more of these, but it's not.
There's not really a sporting activity in the park. So that's usually when we see drinking fountains, but these are more like infill projects like Freddie was talking about.
How big is it?
Not big.
Yeah.
Not big.
Size of this room.
Yeah, it's probably like thirty by sixty or so.
Yeah.
The most, most of the community wanted to use the park was to, at the bus stop, act as a bus central zone for the kids to be able to congregate and get into a shelter area in case it's bad weather and things like that.
Okay.
So like just the general use of the pavilion, is that going to be governed through City Park or just?
City Park.
So it's just like the other, you got a call, you want to use it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I didn't know if City Park was going to govern it or not.
No, this is another, because we do the maintenance, so this is another, any little park we put in will be under Parks and Rec.
All right.
Somebody else? Yes, sir.
The only deduction we took was alternate two?
That's correct.
And that was the one with the water fountain and a cup of sewer and all that?
Right, the other deduction.
Well, came from allowances.
Yeah, we had deduct alternate one included some park equipment, which we didn't want to eliminate. That's benches and kind of things that make a park, a park. And then we had a group of allowances in there, so that's where we ended up adding those allowances in the value engineering component. That's what you see, like, I, item B through E. And then the other one was electrical work, which we thought was more important to have the lighting and the electrical in the park.
And what was, uh, alternate three?
Electrical.
Electrical, okay. Thank you.
Alternate two was the plumbing.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, ultimately, I'd like to keep it all in the project. The lowest bidder, unfortunately, one small error. You know, you guys would have probably had a, a better bid, but it's public bid law and that's why we have to follow those type of guidelines. And it's, you know, it's the way it is.
No problem. Thank you.
Everybody good?
Just to kind of comment on the, the water fountain, um, there's the pocket park in Acadia Acres. There's no water fountain and the kids still go and have fun and no issue so far, so.
You know, George Rock Reed doesn't have one, the Church Alley doesn't have one. I mean, it is common.
The houses are closed.
If there's no sports activities or anything, you know.
Yeah, that's different.
The houses are closed.
Yep.
Everybody good? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Four C.
Resolution number 2531, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement between the city of New Iberia and statewide, statewide electrical services LLC related to belt press operations at the T Bayou wastewater treatment plant.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo, I need a second.
Second.
Councilman Ron Davis, is there a discussion on this? This is where statewide would run our belt press at the plant. Everybody good? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Four D.
Resolution number 2532, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement between the city of New Iberia and Domeng Zabow and Associates LLC related to the T Bayou wastewater treatment plant project, water sector one.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill and, uh, Councilwoman Brooke Markout. This is an item that we are on half with the T Bayou plant. They have some water sector money from the state that we can't get on our own right now. We are spending more money doing more improvements at the plant, so immediately our engineering firm looks at the total and as we've had to do with, you know, with other items, as the job goes up, they're, it's all percentage based, so this is to increase their fees for the engineering because it's a bigger project. Craig, you got anything to say? Okay, okay, well, I just wanted to know you were here in case we did. So I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? And no questions for Craig. Everybody's good?
We all, we know the cost is going up, right, Craig? It's not going down, right?
No. Okay, well, then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four E.
Resolution number 2533, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the city of New Iberia and the Louisiana Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness related to a cyber readiness assessment.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Brooke Markout. This is, uh, something free from the governor's office. They come in, they work with our IT people, which is Vince Como and Associates, and they assess our whole security system of our, uh, all of our computer network just to make sure that there's no place we're going to get hacked. And having been hacked by the Russians once, I don't want that to happen again. It's a free service, so they come in and they just assess to look for weaknesses and to give us suggestions of how to shore up our computer system. Any questions or comment? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four F.
Resolution number 2534, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement to retain Dean Watney to advise the city in planning zoning subdivision and other land use matters in which the city attorney has a conflict of interest.
I need a motion.
I move.
Councilman Troy Como, Councilman Dan Dahl on a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
So this is being hired for, um, one particular area or?
Well, we got, we have so many things going on and we're not a very large town. There could be some other areas that, you know, our attorney Jeff Somer could have a conflict. So this gives me a backup person that if that arises itself, I don't lose any time. I can switch to Dean if Jeff says, hey, you know, I have a conflict.
So we hire him like, like for the year?
Same, same rate as Jeff. Uh, you had something, Jeff?
As needed.
Yeah, just wanted, I, I suggested it on an as needed basis. We've done this before, kind of informally. When I have a client who bids on something, we've called Dean, um, and we've called on him a couple of other times, but I think it ought to be more formal and authorize the mayor to do this kind of at, you know, his discretion is needed. We have this one thing that's coming up, you know, now, but we have other stuff that's going to come up. And, you know, I've turned down work for people in this room. Because of conflict, but, you know, I can't always, can't always choose that. But, um, yeah, so I, I think you need some independent advice sometime. Because I have a connection or my client has an interest in what's going on, even if I don't represent a developer, a seller, or something like that.
Any other questions?
Dean knows what he's doing. He's done it for the parish a lot.
Any other questions?
Just, just makes us more efficient.
Well, you know, we don't want to mess with those people, right?
No, that's right. No, you said it more than once.
No, he's very qualified.
It can speed up a lot of process on some of these projects.
I think so. Thank you. Everybody good? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five A.
Resolution number 2535, a resolution granting a width variance from fifty feet to thirty feet on an access entry into a proposed commercial development from Queen City Boulevard.
I move.
I need, I'm gonna, I need a motion. I got one. Uh, Councilman Troy Como and Councilwoman Warren White. Is there any discussion on this item? Talked about it last time. Everybody good? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, six A.
Discussion and action related to six twenty-six E St. Peter Street, District Five, resolution number 2536.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Uh, Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo and second by Councilman Ron Davis. Um, Matt?
This is, uh, six twenty-six E St. Peter. We've talked about this for the past couple of weeks, couple of meetings here. So this will be the, hopefully the day that we present the contract for Ms. Asma. And she would need to agree with it, today, I guess.
Well, if I can just explain it.
Yes, sir, please do.
The council voted to demolish this property some time ago. And Asma Malome filed an appeal and this thing is working its way through the courts. I believe we are going to have the right to demolish it and it won't be too long if we proceed that way. The insurance company that defends us, Travelers, through their attorney, asked us if we would consider some proposal to let her fix the property instead of us demolishing it, which I think would be, you know, a good thing to do. So we, at prior meeting, said that tonight was going to be the meeting when we would talk about taking some path other than demolition. So in order to do that, uh, Matt has given us a schedule of work that needs to be done over the next six months with specific things that would need to be done and some deadlines. I've drafted an agreement that says that, um, you know, some whereas is, and then she's agreed to do the, uh, the repairs to the property and we have a schedule that she's got to meet. If she doesn't meet the schedule, we can, we can go ahead and demolish the house without any kind of further proceedings. She agrees to dismiss her appeal and she agrees to sign a general release of liability for us. We have all that kind of paperwork we put together. So we spent hour and a half yesterday morning discussing that in the inspection office and going over all the terms. I have told Ms. Asma that if she wants to do this and the council agrees, if there's an overrun in the cost, that's her problem. If there's a delay in construction, it's her problem. If the work is more extensive than she thinks it needs, that, you know, needs to be done at this point, that's her problem. And we're not going to be responsible for any of those things, so the risk is hers. I also told her that if she wants to do this, that's fine, but she could face, she could face putting more money into this property and then wind up not completing it and it being demolished in the end anyway. So I think we fully explained the agreement. I think she fully understands it. And, uh, when we left the meeting yesterday, she was going to think about it because there were some alternatives, um, maybe. I think we, um, we're really coming down to two things. Either we proceed with demolition or we have an agreement with her. She talked about the possibility of hiring somebody to demolish the prop, the structure herself because it would be cheaper for her to do it than for us to go through the public bid law where, you know, we have all these processes and a math error can give you a high bid, right? So, um, we talked about that alternative. I'm not sure what she's prepared to do, but we said, you know, change your plans to leave town, come to the, to the meeting tonight. If you want to make a pitch, otherwise we're going to move forward with demolishing the house. So, and I know Councilman Davis has been instrumental in putting this together and he has spoken up for her, uh, in situations where, you know, um, he's just trying to do the right thing and trying to work this out. So we're doing an experiment here to see if maybe this would work. It's unusual. It, it might not. We may never do it again, but we're taking this opportunity if she's willing to make this commitment. That is for the council to decide, yes or no? And any more explanation needed?
Everybody good? Yes, sir.
Ms. Asma, thank you for coming out and thank you also for coming through, being upfront with us thus far. Mr. Jeff has been upfront and straight and, and tried to be as fair as possible, myself. And we've communicated as long with Matt, with all the expectations with the agreement that we have to sign. And, uh, the council has also taken a position here to work with us, I'll say, you know, upon my request and everything. So, uh, right now, the, it's in your ballpark to do the agreement as understood or you have the other option of the demolition. And as long as we have that understanding, I guess we're good.
Matt, you got anything else?
Not really. Uh, it's up to, I guess.
Yeah. Mayor Proton had a question.
So Ms. Asma, I, I made the statement last meeting that, I think it was twenty thousand dollars we talked about, that number.
That number is tweaked up a little bit.
Okay, but whatever, but originally it was twenty. I made the statement that, you know, if you invest twenty thousand dollars in this house and you don't complete it and we force to demo it, we're going to demo it and that twenty thousand dollars is going to be at your cost. And I'm sure Jeff explained it to you, right?
Yes, sir.
So, so you're fully aware. I'm not going to, I'm not going to hesitate to demo it if you don't meet the criteria because a lot of us are seeing as a big eyesore, we're getting complaints from a lot of businesses. And, and that's what, you know, that's what we're here to explain to you. So if you're fully explain, so, okay, thank you. Jeff, I got a question.
Yeah.
So if we setting precedence here by offering a deal to Ms. Asma to do this house, houses that are coming up in the future, are we going to have to do the same thing since we set a precedence, offer them a deal? Because it looks like we invested some legal fees with this project to get it to where it's at. I'm just questioning if other projects come up, we got to do the same?
I don't think we have to do the same.
Okay.
No, I don't think we have to do the same. And this is an experiment.
Okay.
You know, and if we learn a lesson here and it's bad, then we certainly don't have to do the same. So, um, no, I don't think, I don't think we do. This one is on appeal. It, it is unusual. We do have a similar process when they come up first time. You know, we sit here and we bargain with the owner. The owner makes promises. We give them a deadline. You know, and they tell us what they're going to do by a certain time, so, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's a little unusual. I would like to go over the schedule, just so y'all would know what it is, okay?
Okay, good.
Good.
By March 21st, she has to get the permit and that's Friday. By April 29th, she has to complete repairs to roof, windows, doors, soffits, eaves, walls, siding, access, and construction necessary to make the building safe and fit for human occupancy under sections 102 and 111 of the International Property Maintenance Code. So that's exterior. By May 13th, 2025, she has to complete all repairs to service entrance and construction necessary to bring the electrical system in the building into compliance with Article 230 of the National Electrical Code, and that's the, um, electrical service. By July 22nd, she has to complete repairs and construction necessary to bring the sewer and plumbing into compliance with the International Plumbing Code and all rewiring necessary to bring the building into compliance with Articles 310 and 398 of the National Electrical Code. By September 18th, 2025, she's got to finish everything. Her, uh, compliance with this is going to be verified by inspections. If she misses a deadline, that's it. She's in default. If she's in default, we can knock it down. She agrees that she's going to complete all work without unnecessary disturbance to neighboring property owners and she agrees to keep the property secure, safe, and neat. All debris and trash will be placed in a dumpster or hauled off daily. If she misses any, any portion, any deadline, that's it. There's no appeal. You can't sue us.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I never did in the beginning. I don't know. It was just, I don't know if to stop.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, so, uh, so.
Okay, why don't you, uh, tell us what, what do you choose?
Whatever Mr. Jeff told me yesterday, explained to me. I went through it home and I was up all night long. I went through it and God's willing, that's what I'm planning on doing. And I hope to God I will do it even before. But I'm, I have a goal after May and I'm trying to finish it even before that, in the grace of God.
So Ms. Asma, uh, you're saying that you will agree to the agreement and you will sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
So you willing to put all this money into this home?
Yes.
And get it done?
We got it.
You know, we trusting you to do this here and the council here is going along with it, so we hoping you get it done? So without the, demolish it after you put all this money, so please get it done on a deadline.
I will. I promise you I will.
Somebody else? No other comments, questions? So we're voting on proceeding, just to make sure we're all on the same page. We voting on, she will sign that agreement and that's, that's the road we're going down. Everybody's clear on that, that that's what we're voting on?
No, no signature is demo. If she chooses from here tomorrow and said, no, I'm not signing it, we ain't got to come back for it anymore.
Yeah, what does she have to?
No.
Oh, I'm just asking.
If she signs it.
I know what did happen. That's right.
Okay, but if she doesn't sign it, we have to go through the court process.
Correct.
Because she's not waived.
Yeah, because then she would not have waived.
Correct, that's correct.
But once, once she signs it, that's it. She's on the track.
I got a question too.
Yes, sir.
So you, you sure you have everything lined up to be able to follow all the procedures and everything? And I'm just saying this because I'm saying it's a lot of money we dealing with, with you.
It is.
And if something happens and you don't follow your other procedures, you're going to lose out, you know? So I just want to make sure you, you have everything lined up to follow the procedures and make sure everything goes right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think, well, we have the paperwork and it'll be signed off tonight. Should pursuit, we get in the permit Should pursuit, we get in the permit, and then we can start going forward. But I appreciate y'all understanding the situation and giving her a chance to do what's right.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Everybody's good, then please vote your machines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, please stick around?
Yes, sir.
It's on.
All right. Item 7A, panel clerk.
Barbette Lestrapster present monthly budget to actual report for November 1st, 2024 through February 28th, 2025.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So, yeah, we presented with the budget report. It's for the four months ending. The time period is November 1st of 2024 to February 24th of 2025. Everything is going according to budget. Everything's pretty much in line with budget. It's kind of a, it's pretty uneventful report. Property tax collections, last month we were at 92%. Now, we're up to 97% of property tax collections. All of the sales taxes and tip taxes are coming in in line with budget. We don't see an issue there, as well as any other revenues, all the other revenues and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any questions on the report.
All right, one question.
Yes.
On a taxes, if the people are late on taxes, and we have a penalty they pay.
Yes.
It goes in that same line item as property tax, or is it separate?
The, the penalties is on, it's, it's consolidated altogether, relump it all together, but there is a separate account.
Okay.
General ledger account for the penalties and, and the interest.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody else? Everybody good? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 8A, panel clerk.
Discussion about potential future traffic signal at South Lewis Street and 20 Arpent Road.
This is Councilman David Merrill.
Good evening. There's something that I want to address as far as Lewis Street and 20 Arpent. Ever since I was in office from the first time, I had a lot of constituents talking to me about, we need a light on 20 Arpent and Lewis Street. It's real hard to come out on both of those areas, and at the time when I was on the council the first time, I tried to get a light put on Jefferson Terrace and also Lewis Street. We went through DOTD because that was DOTD at the time. Took a long time, they turned me down, then they went back and went back at them again. And we end up getting it done through a grant also that Ms. Jane Roy put together for the sidewalk, so we came out good on that because I was gonna have the parish to pay for half of it. So, they turned me down on Lewis Street, so I'm coming back at it because I've had a lot of constituents, you know, ask me about it, you know, since, before I came in and came on, on the council. And also, uh, people, one of our people that works for us, for the city, asked me the same thing. Soon as he asked me, he said, Dave, when you come back, you need to talk to them about a light on Jefferson Terrace, I mean, 20 Arpent and Lewis Street. But it's, it's been so hard dealing with that, and then I did my homework on it and found out that each one of you guys have copies that I don't have to deal with DOTD. We was thinking it was DOTD.
We were a couple of blocks off, that's my fault. It's, it's Bi Lo to Le Maire.
Correct.
Thought it was Bi Lo to 20 Arpent, so it is a state.
Right.
It's not a state road.
Right.
It's us.
They come down as so far, and when it got to 20 Arpent, that part became the city of New Iberia. So, I know we, we, I'm looking at this, and I want to get you guys discussions on this, and I had a lot of constituents talking to me about it. Some of them were supposed to come tonight, they didn't show up, they had some things happen. But I know we'd have to look at some funding for it, and Captain Leland put some, a report together showing the accidents they've had from 2022 to 2025. There wasn't no serious major accidents, but the time span as far as sitting at 20 Arpent on both sides and the turning on Lewis Street, it actually is a little time there, and then you got some corners where you got that Asian restaurant on the other side, they got a fence all the way around it, and that's kind of hard for you to see when you're trying to come out. And flip side on the other side, they got a big tree on the other side, and it's, it's, it's something, you know, and I just want to look at it and see if we can look at maybe possibly working on some grant money or something later to be able to put a light there, because we got a lot of stuff coming in in New Iberia, too, especially across the bayou with these new homes that's gonna come into play, and that's gonna bring more businesses in also. And I figure that by that time, Lewis Street is gonna increase with traffic, and I want, want to see what you guys will think about it, and I want your guys' opinions on it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
It looks like you had 10 wrecks between 22 and 25.
Correct.
And a lot of wrecks, it looked like it was, um, turning left, I don't know why. And maybe, as you mentioned about the fence or something, might have to be addressed, but it looks like what you were asking mostly about the time they sitting at that stop sign before they go versus the wrecks.
Yes, sir.
And, but maybe the clearance of what's restricting the view might have something to do with the few, the wrecks, they have one wreck, two maybe, but, but I understand, and I, I went by there, and I, I make an effort not to go that way, so.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, because you're right about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That intersection I go through quite frequently, and I'm like, damn, sometime I try to avoid it, because especially making a left turn, you have to go across both lanes to proceed, and depending on the railroad track or the red light, you know, I mean, hey, it's zooming, so you know, you gotta have some good neck action to make sure you're in the right. So, sometimes also, like I say, you may have obstructions, say, in this one picture where the sign is by that little, uh, commercial subdivision, if there's a big truck there, and I've seen that happen a couple of times, you can't see through it.
Sure.
So, you got to keep nosing out and stuff, and then take your chances. And I, I've been in accidents before, and they hurt, and none of them worth it. So, I guess it's well worth looking into this, and, you know, I'm, I'm for it.
Mayor Protim?
David, I, I think, I think, you know, one accident is too much for sure, but when you're looking at this one specific area, you know, there's several areas, and I'll make, Brooks District, Darby Lane, that's a huge problem right now, so there's more than just one. So, you know, if we were to look at just one, a single one out, we need to look at more than one area to make sure that we address them all. I'd hate to just pick and choose one and not the other one, because I've got multiple calls on this one as well. So, if we do pursue some kind of grant activity, I would ask you to include other intersections as well.
I'm fine with that, you know? I'm fine with that, you know?
Somebody else? Yes, ma'am.
I agree that that intersection is a mess, and I'm surprised there's only 10 accidents reported right there. I get my hair done in that general area, so I am there frequently. But yeah, it's, it's a crazy intersection, but like you said, Darby Lane as well, Darby Lane with Jane Street, then Darby Lane with 182, but that's the state on that end. Both ends, actually, I think would be the state.
City is the state.
Yeah, so, I, I did get a, a traffic study done, though, on Darby Lane and Spanish Trail, and the state turned me down for a traffic light right there.
Right, right.
They have some high requirements.
Yeah, they, they do have some requirements, but if we can get a grant to get something like this done, I think that could be doable.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just like everybody else, I try to avoid that street there because it's hard for me to get out, you know, when I go in that area, so I'm all for it, but I don't get my hair done.
What I'd like to do is, because I am sure that this discussion is gonna bring, you know, what about this intersection, that intersection? So, I would like to collect that data, because we're not in a huge rush, because we don't have the money right now.
Right.
I will talk with Ms. Jane about looking for some grants.
Okay.
Also, I'm thinking about, let me, I, I'm not shooting my mouth off, let's see if I can afford it, okay?
Okay.
But we've, in the past, we've hired Dean Teakle, a traffic engineer, and he's looked at some things for us. So, if you have, like, these intersections, somebody called me by the Laurville Road and Lewis Street there, too, you know, just.
There's several of them.
There's quite a few.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you don't mind, turn me in, and thank you for doing this, David, turn me in what you can, and then I will at least get a price to say, okay, let's say it's five intersections.
Right.
I mean, I know that they wanted a half million dollars to put a light on Sinister Street that we were gonna do for the Pepperplex, and we had to go on another route, because they wouldn't let me.
Right, right, I remember that.
And DOTD said, we're not a progressive agency, so you gotta have so many deaths and so many wrecks and so many left turns a day, and I said, yeah, but I'm trying to prevent that, because we, we're building a park, you know? They said, ah, we're not, we're not progressive like that. So, what I'd like to do is, if I end up with three or four, let's say, you know, spread out through town, like, I like to do everything, then I'll see, if I can get a price, I'll come back to you, of course, to let Dean Teakle study that, and just, that might give us some information that we could be better prepared to apply for a grant.
Right. I would like that, too. I, I really want to try to get a price, because I want it just to be a discussion amongst all of us, but I want to be able to get a price. We can look at that area, and like what you said, some other areas.
Yeah, what he'd do is, is look at the feasibility, and he could give us some cost.
Right.
And it might be for four or five, because, you know, it's.
Might be better, huh?
I think we'd be better looking at it that way, and then we make a cohesive decision as a council.
Right.
Where we're gonna spend our money.
Yeah.
You know, now the idea of the left turn thing?
Mm-hmm.
It might be worthwhile to, to pursue, not letting people make a, I mean, the facts show, I don't know if anybody's gonna be, that's gonna be popular, but the facts do show that the left turn is, is the major problem with that.
That'd be cheapest, sure.
So, that's something else, well, maybe that's a stopgap to save somebody's life in a meantime.
Yeah, because we don't have a turning lane to go into in that area.
It's too skinny, already have to look at a turn.
And, yeah, and, but, yeah, yeah.
You gotta be quick.
But you, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Oh, yeah.
It's stressful, because I'm saying, you know, you know, you got traffic coming from both sides.
Yeah.
It's not easy, but I'm saying.
But maybe the left turn.
I like to look at it that way, too. No left turn might help for right now, but I still want to, yeah.
Yeah, well, like I said, if I hire an engineer here, he'll give us all the options.
Yeah, we can look at the other options as well and see what it's gonna cost us and everything.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, we're on the subject of intersections, and seemingly we're talking about red lights, but I'd like to entertain having some stop signs in some areas as well. I think it's one that we talked about, which is on the corner of 20 Arpent and Cherokee Street. The speed there is just unreasonable, sometimes 60, 70 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone, and there's a school there, and there's also a deaf kid down on the end, you know? So, some blind intersections when you turn, you know, because of shrubs and trees and fences and things like that, the, the visibility is very low. I'm afraid that somebody's gonna get hurt there, seriously hurt, that sometimes kids are riding bicycles, they're riding four-wheelers and stuff, you know, which maybe shouldn't happen, but the speed limit, I've, I've, I've had it introduce me as the ND 500, and I've sat at my house on Cherokee Street, and I've seen them zoom, 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 zoom. You know, I'm saying, man, this, this is unacceptable, it's crazy. So, with your studies, I don't know what it takes to put a stop sign, but I think as a cheap situation, put two signs, there's already one, at the expense of somebody getting hurt, so I wish we were looking to that.
Okay.
Be something we put on, on there also. I, I look at, I, I hope that we can probably stay with this, and maybe after we get prices and everything, come back and look at this a little bit later, you know, once you get all the information that we need.
Anybody else?
And then, I know you're talking about a stop sign, you put a stop sign, sometime it don't stop them, because I live on a corner, Paul and I bought their runs, the stop sign right in front of my home, all the time.
A, a stop sign is a regulatory sign, if they break the law.
I'm not just saying, you know, you do that, but they'll run them.
How'd it go to them?
Anybody else?
I'll point out, too, real quick, I have a couple of no-left-turn signs near the school zones around Dasbit Elementary, and people don't care. They don't listen to them. Like, I have to reach out to NIPD to have them actually patrol it for something to happen, because they look at it and it's like, oh, well, no one's here to watch me, and they take that left turn.
Bruce are starting to put those plastic things in the road, I don't know what you call them, but it prevents you from making, they stick up.
Oh, kind of like a median.
No left-hand turn, what do you call that, chief?
If you look at, like, Lafayette, where Lafayette is, they have that, where you can't turn, can't turn.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, that, that is an option, y'all can look at.
Yeah, we, we're looking at that, too.
Do it cost a lot?
No.
They go right in the middle.
No, it's plastic. They cheap.
Maybe that's.
You need a traffic study? You don't need a traffic study to get that.
No, that's something we could just do.
Yeah, we, we talked about it, we can look at that as well, you know? Until we can try to see about maybe coming up with some funding, because I, I just look at that area, man, it's, and I know from what we doing, we're gonna get a lot more traffic in that area because of the businesses and everything, and a lot of businesses and restaurants is in that area. Man, when you come through there from morning to noon, it's crazy, man.
If you look at, if you look at, you gotta be careful with the threshold of number of cars that come into an intersection to give them a, you open up Pandora's box, that you gotta have a stop sign every intersection in the city.
Right.
Because you, you're setting a threshold so low because of the volume of traffic in some of the streets that you're talking about, but when you're talking about coming off of 20 Arpent and making, forcing a right turn versus a left.
Mm-hmm.
It's extremely safe, it gets worked well in Lafayette, by, by Lafayette PD, whatever, having some, some people turning left and causing some, some crashes.
Mm-hmm.
That didn't have the volume of what, what they were looking for.
Mm-hmm.
And talking about just a few basically stakes in the ground that, that forced a, forced a right turn, and basically forces people to get on the road and then turn safely to the next spot where they can get us in a turn.
Right, right, and that's, yeah.
Basically.
That's almost like a turning lane type of thing. Yeah, yeah.
And, and the block is safer than, than potentially causing crashes.
Well, that's something I definitely want to look at, if we can look at it, get calls together and everything.
Yeah.
Until we can possibly look at what funding be for that area and other areas we spoke about as well.
Okay. Everybody good? Thank you, good discussion. Now we move on to Councilman's remarks and I'll start with Councilman Dan Dog.
Mayor, where are we staying with the Steamboat Warehouse on completion?
I think Spanish Fest will be the first to use it within the next couple of weeks. Next week they're coating the stage, it gets a coating. That's one of the biggest things left and it has a little bit of, of three or four day cure in time. So I think another couple of weeks it'll be wrapped up.
And something else, maybe since summer's coming, and we talk about this every year, about the grass cutting and the people throwing grass in the street, the leaves in the street and all that. And we talked about, they do have a fine, but the fines are low, we don't implement it, whatever, whatever. I, I think it's maybe in the next couple, three weeks, we can pull that back up and see exactly what our ordinance reads.
Okay.
Because it is becoming a.
We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, well, I would need to get into the information of the ordinance that we have now.
Yeah.
Just so, we might wanna change that.
Okay.
And, and we talked about if you hit them in a pocketbook, it's could get around. And it's more than likely, the ones that I see, and I could be wrong, is not the homeowners as much as the higher people. The homeowners don't want that in front of their house. And normally they take care of it with the, but it's the ones that, that charging them to take care of it.
Yes, sir.
And one time we talked about the responsibility, just real quick about if it be the homeowner or the person, the contractor himself. And I, I was against at that point about being the homeowner. I think it should be the contractor, that's who's got the license and making the money. So if you don't mind, maybe we can talk about that.
Okay, sure.
It's bad right now.
That'd be a good discussion.
That's good, that's good. We, we, when y'all, we was all in the council together, we, we put that together.
Yeah.
But it wasn't working because, you know.
Well, let's, let's pull it up again, that's fine. Thank you, mayor. Councilman Ron Davis?
Yes, sir. Well, I'd like to at least announce that the Ann Street Park has officially opened today. And it's a long time coming, but it's well worth it. I'm reaching out to the community to get all this value and self-worth out of it that we can enjoy and have a good time, keep it safe and just cooperable within the community. I appreciate everything that the board has done to facilitate this park and the funds that came through from higher up, you know? So let's just try to keep it safe. One more thing is that on the 22nd, over at Surrogates, the city park, there's a community health involvement also that's taking place. You know, some stations to be set up with mental health and, you know, checking blood pressures and giving other information pertaining to health. So if you have time, please go out and support the system and see what, do for the community.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, I wanna talk also about, we have a neighborhood watch meeting coming up Thursday at the Slamanon Main Street, 6 o'clock. Got two of my ladies that lives in my district right in here. They were normally at 10. And I just want everybody who wants to come out and be invited, it's not about just our neighborhood. It's about the whole city of New Iberia. So anyone that wanna come out, I have Parish President Larry Rishaw is gonna come out and talk to us about some of the business things that's coming into our city that we can look at besides what, what our mayor has talked about at our last meeting. And also Leland, Police Chief, they come to the meeting also to be able to talk to you guys and anything you wanna bring to their attention that we need to look at. We will, and I'm anxious for them to go over some things also with the new police group they're putting together to do community policing. Thank you.
So just an early reminder, I know it's a little bit early, but made a second, we got a parish, of course, is doing household waste collection day and I'm getting a bunch of calls. This is for city residents too, to drop off. So mark your calendars, start putting your stuff together for Household Waste Collection Day. Made a second, bring your household, the goods that can't be picked up by your normal trash to there and they'll dispose them for you. Also, I spoke to the supervisor of Loves today. Loves will be doing a soft opening Thursday morning. So everything we've been working on so hard is coming to fruition. If everything works out tomorrow, they will be doing a soft opening on Thursday morning.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to offer our condolences to the Dewey family at this time during their, their loss of Mr. Bo Dewey, our district attorney. So I don't know if we do resolutions of condolences, mayor. I don't know if we've ever done that as a, as a body, but if.
Really, not, I think we haven't.
Okay, no problem, I'd just like to offer that, please, to the council and the community and the, and the city of New Iberia, the family of, that, that we offer our condolences and keep them in our prayers.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the only thing I'd like to say, you got Western Council, Neighborhood Association, other organization that's going around in the city picking up litter, you know, say.
They are.
Buck term, I turned it off, but it's back on. I'm a star. But, but it's two things that we, that we doing by picking up the litter to beautifying the neighborhood because once the trash pick up, the neighborhood looks so nice. I'm telling y'all, the streets look clean. And also, when you leave that trash there, the litter and blowing the trash from the, from the leaves in the streets, guess where it go when it rain, in the drain? And guess what happened? It clogs. And guess what happened when that, it flood? So we can try to prevent the flooding by picking up the trash. I hope it cause a train's reaction with the community to start picking up the trash in front of their home. Everybody do that, our neighborhood will look real nice.
Thank you.
I would also like to offer my condolences to the Dewey family. I knew Bo professionally and just reading his obituary and all the stuff he was involved in, that's what I want out of my elected officials. Like he was involved in a little bit of everything, which is great. So, I mean, if all of us that are up here can do as much as he does, you know, just be involved in different organizations, which is, I know several of us are, you know, it's a good thing. People see that and I think they appreciate it. Also, it's time to cut grass. I'm starting to see the long, long grass and like Mr. Dan was saying, we need to make sure that the grass does not go, the clippings into the roadway. That's not okay. So I look forward to having that discussion again, perhaps for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, you had something else?
Yes. Again, my condolences go out to Dewey family as well because Mr. Bo Dewey did a lot within the community and he kinda kept things straight and across the board fair as much as possible. But I wanted to say that it's early voting that has started already and it ends on the 22nd, which is Saturday this week. And the election with a number of amendments is on March 29th. So I wanna encourage everybody to go out and exercise their right to vote, you know? And this, like I said, even with Mr. Dewey, he exercised that as much and, and dealt with so much of this and it's all right. So please go out and do what you have to do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanna say, echo them about Mr. Dewey and Bo did so much for this community. And he was just a great guy and his family and his wife, he's gonna be missed. And just wanna pray for him and his family because it was, it was a tough couple weeks. Thank you.
You had something else?
So just again, my condolences to the Dewey family, but also if not aware of it, I don't know if y'all got an email, there will be some, several city streets closed tomorrow for the procession. So be aware of it. Not sure, I think it's 10:30, Leland, you and Noah, 10:30 to 3:00, somewhere in between there?
It's gonna go in section from Pelleraz, starting at 10, the procession from Pelleraz.
Get to the mic, come to the mic. I didn't know they was gonna out.
So we're gonna start shutting roads down at 10. The procession should leave Pelleraz about 10:30. Jefferson Terrace to Main, Main to Railroad, Railroad to St. Peter, St. Peter back up to the church. What we're planning because of the number of people, we're expecting that we are going to convert St. Peter into a parking lot. The cross streets will remain open, Siberia, French, Weeks, Julia. They're gonna be closed while we park people, but they should remain open to be able to keep people across for the entire church service. After the church service then to St. Peter to Center, Center to Admiral Doyle, Admiral Doyle to Memorial Park. If parking gets congested in there, we will convert Admiral Doyle, the outside lane going west